One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Pastor Wayne, would you like to lead us in this prayer?
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we just come before you and, Lord, we ask you to stretch your forth your hand, touch the council, Mayor Protem, and, Lord, the city officials, and, Lord, we ask your blessing upon each and every one, and, Lord, your blessing upon each and every one that is present. We ask for your guidance and directions in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. And roll call.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Here.
Mayor Becker will not be present this evening, but a quorum is declared.
All right, modifications to agenda. Did anybody get a chance to look at that?
We did. I do not have any modifications.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
And approval of the council paper.
And I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any other discussion?
Okay, seeing none.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so, citizen comments and special presentations. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please file the appropriate paperwork form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. We have a request for Sky High. We have Burris and Sons Bucking Bulls. Are they present?
Good evening, Council. Before you, you have several discount requests for Sky High, including the Burris and Sons Bucking Bulls, the Progressive Ag Safety Days, several different activities through the chamber and for the After Prom Committee. All of those have been presented to the Rec Department. In your packet you have those and you have Jaime's recommendation on each one of those. He did recommend for approval on each one of those, and those are the basic discounts.
Okay.
Basic discount meaning the nonprofit? Are these all nonprofits?
Either nonprofit or the youth programs.
Okay.
And Forrest also mentioned that they all meet the normal requirements for discount.
Right, so the request that we've all made is for this inner discount is provided to the appropriate organization, so, you know, Jaime did review those and there's some issues about the council.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Do we have a motion?
Yep.
We need a motion?
Yeah.
We do?
Yeah.
I move that we approve those four requests for discounts in use at Sky High Stampede at the Sky High grounds.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any other discussion?
No.
All right, seeing none?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Nita, I'm sorry, was that water slide donation included in?
No, sir, it is not.
So I guess we're down to the water slide donation.
So this, this evening you have Tomas Mestas here who's representing the organization requesting this and think he could come up and speak about potential donation of water slide.
Okay. And if you wouldn't mind, if you can just tilt that microphone a little bit higher for us and speak right into that, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tomas Mestas. I am the Director of the Blanca Fort Garland Community Center. It was brought to my attention that you were possibly going to renovate the Sky High and getting rid of the water slide and our community center would be extremely interested in it just to give added benefit to our community as well as the kids and everybody in our surrounding community, giving them that opportunity to have fun and utilize the slide. I believe Forrest added our letter that we submitted to you a couple of weeks ago. Like I said, a lot of it is for the kids and we are a local government entity which we would greatly appreciate any donation of that sort. Is there any questions you would have for me?
How recent was that facility built?
The original place was built in 1981 and that was with the swimming pool as our main feature back then. We've added on the gymnasium as well as extended our weight room in 2004. We passed a bond and that was finished in 2005.
Do you have a timeline for the removal of the slide from?
We haven't discussed a timeline or anything. We wanted to see if we'd be able to get it, but I could arrange it pretty fast if need be.
I would, I would rather see it not drag on for a while.
Yeah, but we could arrange it relatively fast.
And Forrest, do you see any, anything here that?
No, sir, actually. There are another governmental organization and we did discuss timeframe. I won't speak particularly for Mayor Becker, but he definitely was in favor of this and said that, you know, need be he could help assist them, assist them getting it out of the building. And basically the, the concept when we first had this discussion was push, pull, or drag it away soon, so.
Okay.
I think if that works, then it's a great idea.
Okay.
So you're obviously aware of the condition of, of, that's your responsibility.
Yes.
Welcome to it as far as I'm concerned, as long as we don't have to encounter any other expenses. It's probably quite a project, but you're already aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to see it out there at your facility. I'd like to see it away from our business.
Like to see it being used.
Yeah.
Right.
I would love to see it being used too.
Probably have some of us go out there and squeal down it.
Yeah, it'd be a great amenity.
And I guess the only thing I'd like to say is I thought it was really nice that you let the firefighters last summer use, use that facility as a base camp and, and that's a great advantage to our community.
Well, I, we, we do like to partner up a lot with different entities and be available to everybody that we can. And that, that's something, that's for the community, so we were more than happy to facilitate that.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
So is this something that we would need a motion on tonight to approve of? Okay.
I would like to move that we approve the water slide donation to the, say your name.
Blanca Fort Garland Metropolitan District Community Center.
There you go. Thank you.
That's a mouthful, isn't it?
I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Seeing none?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, looks like we're down to the LBA report from Ron Douglas.
Okay, so it looks like the tides are turning. Things are happening a little bit faster now. We've still got a ton of stuff in the works, but I'll just go through the list. I believe you guys have this report in front of you. We'll go through that first. And then we've had a couple of things happen since and I'll, I'll mention those right after this. So let's see, number one, business testimonials. You guys can read through those if you'd like. The metrics for online, no, no additional people have signed up for the online course. We still have the same amount of members, but it's still a four out of five star rating. Had a few people leave more feedback. We're still doing well there. The, and the metrics for the online chat, I, I put in here something a little bit different and so the, the online chat obviously is being used pretty much on a daily basis multiple times. People are, are private messaging us and asking questions and that's, that's been really well, been received really well. And we're almost able to get out to a facility within 24 hours. I think almost everybody we've been able to, if they said, if they invited us out to their business and asked us for assistance, we were able to actually go out and visit them onsite within 24 hours. So that's been really, really nice. Number five, let's see here, survey the, oh, so this one's pretty cool. This is really exciting. I've added an attachment to this. We've taken all the day, the data from registered businesses and we've put them in a program and I believe I added an attachment to the, to the agenda there that you guys have. And just a sample to show you. But now we're able to keep track of every business, where their, where their, where their standings are, if they're going through the online training, how they felt about the online training, where their business is struggling, where they need help with that. It's all basically in a digital, digitized system now. So I can actually log in from my phone, look up a business real quick. I can see the owner's name, their information, where they're struggling, what they need help with, and swing by and, and visit with them on that. So that's really exciting. We were able to get that all done. Okay, so the progress reports on the businesses, so we are, and I, I kind of need some feedback on this one. We have looked at a couple of grants that are available that we would like to apply for. One of which, and probably the one that I really would like to go after the most is the renovation of the train depot for economic development purposes. The problem I ran into today that I just found out and I think we can find a workaround is that it says that the properties have to be owned, maybe you know, so something different, but I heard that the property has to be owned by the city. Yeah. Somebody told me that. I have not verified that. If that's the case, we run into a little glitch there and I'm going to see if I can find a workaround on that one since we are working on a long-term lease on that, on that building. So but I would, I would really like to go after a grant for that one. I am changing, I am shifting gears on the Valley View Building as we have found a tenant for that. I can't say anything yet, but it's super exciting and I'll be able to tell you on the next one all about it. So that building will be filled.
The Valley View?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Valley Print, Valley Print Building, the old, the old Valley Print Building. So I had looked at doing a grant for that. The, the problem I was running into that, I could see it being used as an event facility, but I didn't want to compete with Sky High in any way. And so I really wasn't liking that idea, to be honest with you, but I wanted to at least look at, you know, that possibility. But then I ran into another opportunity. We have been talking for months. It finally has progressed further than that. And I'll be able to fill everybody in more next time around, so stay tuned on that one. We are looking at creating an art council to discuss. So one of the things I've found about every city that's done a turnaround, so I've researched a ton of cities and every city that has done a turnaround economically, they all have one thing in common. They have a strong art community. So I would like to, I put together, I'm putting together a art council to discuss the possibilities of an art community, how we can do that, how we can invite, how we can be more inviting to the art industry and how to get that done. So more to come on that. We are creating a business roundtable. So one of the things I also found, as you guys know, I've gone out and I've talked with a lot of business owners. And everybody has different opinions of the city and where we should be. So I decided to create a roundtable so that we can come together and see what we can do. It's like, okay, let's start talking about it and let's start doing. So we're going to put this roundtable together and it's just going to be business owners in the valley or in, in the area. And, you know, they're going to start pitching ideas of how we can increase economic development, how we can invite new businesses to our area. And so I'm pretty excited to hear what the feedback is from, you know, a lot of these people have been here their whole lives and long-term, so they have a lot more history on the place. And so I'm pretty excited to hear what they have to say. And then I still haven't heard anything from the RA on 117 Adams, so we're still up in the air on that one. Poor lady, she's been holding out for like a year. I don't even know how she feels about this anymore. I haven't even talked to her in a couple of months. I kind of feel bad about that whole thing. So anyway, we're still waiting to hear on that one. That hasn't gone any, gone anywhere.
I have a question about that one.
Yeah.
I know you mentioned on Facebook that there were several, you had two, I believe is what you said, two other buildings that could have possible kitchens.
Yes.
Why is she not, is she not interested in those buildings?
No, she really wanted the 117 Adams. The other one that I had shown her was too big. The Valley Print Building was one of them. It was suitable to put a big kitchen in there, but good grief, that's, that's a big honking place. So it would have to be a much bigger, you know, the renovations there. And then obviously the other building is the old, the Guzlo, Guzlo. But that would take a lot of renovations as well. And so those can be done. The problem with both of those buildings is it needs a bigger tenant than a small sushi place. It needs something almost like a Quincy type level, you know, something that's going to have involve a more overhead, more, more backing, financial backing. Yeah.
Your question before you move on to that next section there, did you cover that segment there? I was really looking forward to hearing about the opportunity zone.
Oh, shoot, I totally skipped it. I'm sorry. So I attended the Opportunity Zone. Yes, this is very exciting. So I attended the Opportunity Zone training. It was an all-day training. I was actually there with Forrest and we went through this training until about five o'clock in the evening. More importantly, I took the, the people that did the training, we went out to dinner and had a long talk afterwards. And they were very, I gave them a tour of Mona Vista and they were very intrigued. They went back and we actually found a fund that is, here's the really interesting part. They, this fund is a, is a large fund and they're willing to dedicate four to 20 million dollars, four million to 20 million dollars for shovel-ready projects in the valley. So what that means is if we can present shovel-ready projects, in other words, pretty much hand it to them on a platter saying, here's the land, here's the project, here's the backer, here's the guy that's going to run the place, they'll take it to their, their group and again, they have four to 20 million dollars to inject into this area. But they want to do it valley-wide. So my thing on this is I have two projects. One is, actually both of them are, one project is about eight million, the other one is about 10. And I presented those projects to them at that meeting and they were very excited about those. And they asked me to put together the project, the, put together the packet. So we're working on that right now. Been working with Forrest on that and we're going to, got a lot more to do. I got to have it ready by March 15th, so it's, yeah, like anything else, it's, yeah, we got a lot to do on that. So we're pretty excited though.
And those two presentations were shovel-ready?
Yes, both of those projects are potentially shovel-ready because we found locations where the, the land is for sale and we have a price on the land. So I think I'm going to go ahead and exercise a option to purchase the land, just to make sure we lock that in and before we present this project out and, and allow everybody to know what, what we're working on. But, you know, one is eight million, one's 10 million, so they're pretty large projects. One is in the city limits. One is right outside the city limits, but it could be annexed in. So, but actually, yeah, it could be, but we'll, we'll talk about that on another, on another date. Okay, so then number seven obviously is the list of businesses that are in the area that I've been working with. And I, I just want to throw this out. I've got some feedback from some of the people, just, just so that I, just because I put their name on here does not mean that if it wasn't for me, they didn't, they don't have a business. Local business assist. I'm strictly here assisting. It doesn't mean that I'm doing everything and, anyway, I just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody. I, I'm strictly here as a guide and a mentor, people that want that. I've had people say, well, you haven't come by my business. Well, you haven't registered. You haven't registered online. You haven't registered our online service. You haven't reached out and asked for any assistance. So I'm, I'm getting to them as fast as I can, but the people that are actually active in, on our online and asking for help, I'm, I'm there more often, obviously. So.
I have, I have a question about this. We've seen some of these names multiple times.
Uh huh.
Are these names of businesses that you've walked back in the door this month?
Yes, yeah, so you'll see.
In the last 30 days?
Yep, so you'll see businesses I've taken off of the list and you'll see businesses that I've added. So some businesses I've taken off, some businesses I've added. And that means, not necessarily walked in the door, I take that back. That means I'll either talk to them on the phone, working with them on email, helping them put together a project, helping them combine something.
But so for the January report, the people you've listed, you've went in to talk to them this month?
February.
Oh, well, okay, I've got January and February stapled together, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. So anyway, the last 30 days, yes.
Okay, all right.
So, um, let's see here. Yeah, I'm going through the list again. Is there anybody in particular you had a question about or?
Well, the Sugar Shack's closed.
Right.
So are you just talking to realtor or the potential business?
Potential person that wants to, to purchase the building. We're talking about the people that own the building. I've been talking with Tracy who's got the building leased, so.
And the school district, that's a big one.
Yeah, the school district, that's pretty exciting. So they want to do a training with the students about, see, not every student wants to go to college, so I'm going to go in there and talk to students about how to start a business and do the six-month plan, which is pretty much a six-month, same six-month plan that everybody that registers for my online course takes. And so I'm going to go in there and I'm going to show them how they can create a six-month blueprint on how to create a business and how to go from zero to six figures in six months. So that's usually pretty exciting for the kids. They, they have done that at several schools and so we'll be doing it here at the high school. So do you have any questions on this so far?
No, I'd like to go back, but you go ahead and finish.
Go ahead, go ahead. What do you got?
No, go ahead and finish and then I'll circle back around.
Okay, all right. So a couple of things I wanted to add. Oh, yeah, also we've got the, the church filled. So the church is being rented right now and what I like about that is they're focusing on youth. So we've got, we've got another church that's going to be helping out the youth, so I'm pretty excited about that. I, I've been, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but we've been a little bit more active on the Facebook community page and I've asked questions on there, getting a lot of feedback. And if you've noticed, it's a ton of feedback on certain topics, some more than others. I do have a question, where we stand, and I'm, I guess I probably should have asked Forrest, I wrote it in my notes, but maybe it's more into Forrest, but I'm, I'm just trying to see where we stand with the RV parking. I was asked about that again today.
Sure, so I mean, we have the basic concept in place and it's February, so Counselor Johnson brought that up with me the other day and as we get, as it gets warmer, we'll start getting that laid out.
Okay. Are, are we going to be providing signs, signage?
Yeah, and we'll have to talk about how we roll that out. You know, the initial rollout is probably on third there and then, sorry, second. Oh, got to block off, right? Yeah. And then we'll look at the Stars Parking Lot and how that might flow and Rob's looking a little confused, I'm sorry. And just to the public, et cetera. So, you know, there's a discussion of, you know, we looked at a larger RV parking project and it kind of was expensive. But then we started, you know, one of the ideas was, well, well, how about if there is a place that you can park, you know, that we can set up for parking. And that area right next to Stars on the south side of the street, on an average daily basis, is pretty unused. So we can actually create, you know, a little bit of signage, some RV parking there. And then the owners of Stars, basically she agreed that we could have some overflow in there too. So we'll work that out as it gets warmer, create some signage, probably some striping in, in her, you know, her east part of her lot. Really, nobody parks there, so she was good with that. And of course, it's got a restaurant, so that's not, and bowling alley, so that's not a bad thing for her either.
Yeah, total win-win there.
But it's kind of a test project to see if we can pull some people in there and just give them a place where they can park and it's right there by the downtown. So
Perfect.
Yeah, basically we're at the, you know, when it's warm and drier, we can, we can start rolling that out.
And so what's exciting about that obviously is, you know, we, one of the biggest complaints is we have a ton of RVs that go through here and nobody stops because there's no place to stop. So you know, Mr. Johnson has, you know, shown us a great spot. Unfortunately, the build-out on that is pretty extensive and this could be something that we could do quickly and at least capture people this summer. And, and it's a win-win for the bowling alley. It's a win-win for downtown because obviously the bowling alley is literally a block away. So we're talking about setting out flyers there. So when people unload from their RV, there's a map of downtown and different places they could walk to within a five-minute walk and go and visit these different stores. So. And then one other thing. I think it's just one other thing, sorry. Somebody presented, and I'm not sure who she is, I haven't done her, I haven't done background on this, but I, I would like to approach her, but I would like your permission on this, about putting a job fair for youth together. And she's looking at doing it somewhere in the valley. And seeing as we're the leaders in the valley as far as economic change, I would love to approach her and say, let's do it here. Let's sponsor that, do whatever we have to do and make it a big event, get all the kids coming to, to a job fair and learning how to, you know, figuring out what skills they need, maybe even doing some training classes. I can see this being something rather large. I didn't want to offer it, I got super excited. I was about ready to message her and, but again, I want to do a research on her, make sure she's the proper fit, but I would like to figure out maybe sponsoring that in a way of providing a facility of some sort to put that event on. She's like literally looking in Alamosa Center, different places in the valley, trying to figure out where to possibly put that event on. And I think having it here and sponsoring that as a city would be awesome.
I agree. Would you guys come to a job fair? Are, are you wanting to work this summer and make a little extra cash? Would you be more likely to come if it were here as opposed to Alamosa Center or Del Nord or something else? I'm glad you're here so I could bug you.
Would you like to learn how to make a hundred thousand dollars in six months?
Woo-hoo. You're speaking Kardashian too.
I, I think that would be great, you know. It's definitely would be beneficial to the community, especially beneficial to the youth, give them, birth something inside of them, so.
See what her needs are and then, I'm, I'm not sure when she was planning on doing that, but maybe we can find a way to accommodate that.
Perfect.
Get the details first, but yeah.
So let me ask it in this way, would we be able to offer her at the dates work, the Sky High facility? the Sky High facility?
If the dates work, we've got Crane Festival and lots of, a few things coming up. What else besides that?
Yeah.
If we could find a slot, yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll get the calendar from you guys, and we'll figure something out, but I appreciate that. I think that's about it, it's been a busy 30 days. But the tides are changing, like I said, it's kind of, it's kind of exciting, the, as you guys know, the Montevilla's under new management, the Fassett Building's filled, the Shaw Building's filled, so the church has been filled, so we're getting there, slowly but surely. It's coming around.
Are you still going to do your train, weren't you going to do a training center or something in the church as well?
Yes, yes, we're going to do the training.
You can do that along with the?
Yeah, actually, I decided to go ahead and move that, because the opportunity to fill it with, you know, a church and a pastor and youth programs, I thought that was something pretty immediate. I can move my training somewhere else, so I moved my training to another building.
Oh, okay, just curious.
Yeah. And you said you had a question?
I didn't. I guess ultimately, I'm still not happy with the metrics in the report, because to me, metrics are numbers. I don't see how many businesses are participating in the program as a whole since its inception. That's something I would like to see. I would like to see who participates monthly in these various, in the chat room, in the online classes, these kind of features. And basically, what you're giving us is kind of a big sentence that things are happening. And to me, and I think to a lot of business people, metrics are about numbers. They, you know, the definition of metrics is something that is quantifiable, and that's something that can be measured, that's something that's a number. And I think with the cost of the program, I think the residents deserve to know the numbers of people that are participating in these features.
Okay, I actually gave those numbers in the past. The numbers I gave you were for the last 30 days, and we, like I said, in the, we didn't have anybody registering the last 30 days for the program, but we have over-
There wasn't anyone in January either, was there?
I believe we had-
Well, there was one.
Yeah, there was one.
So there was just one person in January.
Yeah.
What about for the entire year since the program started last spring?
Those numbers I gave you when we renewed, I don't have them in front of me, but yeah, it was, it was close to 100 that are registered, so.
Did those come to us in numbers?
Yes.
For all of those? I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, I did it in the renewal, but I can, I can pull it up again and email it to you if you'd like, or email it to Forrest again, I'll email it to Forrest. But yeah, I remember doing that in the renewal, I just don't remember the exact, it was 80, 80-something, I'll have to pull it up again, so.
I think we would all appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, I'll send it over to Forrest.
And I was just curious, when you were talking about the depot, you said something about we leasing? We could possibly, who is we? Or is that, are you talking about the city leasing it?
So either the city could lease it, we are looking at, it depends on the route we want to go. The train depot, the, the, the train depot can never be purchased.
It's owned by the rail.
It's owned by the railroad, and we can't do anything with it. So we can do a long-term lease, they're willing to work with the city because they want it to be used for something other than an empty building, a pigeon nest, which is what it is now. And so I'm taking this opportunity to try and figure out what to do with it, how we can do something with it, and how we could turn it into something that's beneficial for the city.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. But we can never own, you know, nobody could ever own that, because it's, it's on the railroad right away, so.
Yeah, I understand that, I just don't know that I'm interested in the city owning another empty building.
No, no.
They wouldn't own it, they would lease it long-term.
Yeah, but we wouldn't do, again, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that.
But then we're responsible for it, also long-term.
Well, yes and no. And the reason why is because I wouldn't do it unless we could find a way to renovate it with the grant money and find a long-term leasee to lease it. But the guy wants to, you know, the guy, the railroad wants to give it to the city in a way, so I can either, we can take it over as LBA, the nonprofit, and oversee that, that's better, okay, and that's not a problem.
In my opinion.
And then we can oversee that and make sure, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to put anything in, I'm not going to do anything until we find a tenant, just like the other buildings. The other buildings are, you know, the ones that are filled are filled, and the ones that aren't are staying that way until we find a long-term tenant that we can do something for, and then we do the renovations. Most people do it the opposite way, and I think it's the wrong way, is they renovate it and then go try and find a tenant for it, and then you get a tenant that comes in and goes, oh, I need this wall moved and that wall moved, or a door here and a window there, and they've got to change everything you just did, so I try to find a tenant first. Anything else?
No, I just like, like I said, I would like to see some, some total number figures from you.
Yeah.
Like I said, for the length of the program as a whole, and then in each of the monthly reports.
Okay, yep. And I see you joined the online Facebook page, and so, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so I went ahead and approved you, so you're on there, so you can go in there and look on the, yeah, yeah.
I was just looking.
Yeah, so you can, you can now go in there and see everything that everybody's been talking about.
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Anything else? Okay, I'm out. Thank you, Ron.
City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and for your information, Council will not take action at this same meeting. So do we, yes?
I would just like to remind everybody that if you're going to speak this evening, you do need to get up to the podium and speak into the mic, and please print your name on the sign-in sheet.
So Margot, if you can please just turn that, there you go.
There you go. Hello? Hi. Nervous enough. Okay, I'm, this is a little down thing, I'm sorry, but you know me, I see a problem or an issue, I need to say something.
Can you please state your name?
Margot Alexander.
Thank you very much.
I live here in town. This week, it was brought to my attention that there was a conversation on Facebook, the Montevista, Montevista Facebook Awareness Page on Tuesday. It was a dialogue between Ron Douglas and Jake from the golf course board. I read it, I was disturbed by it. It upset me. The wordage used by Ron made it sound as if he were the spokesman for the city, this is my interpretation, and I'm just letting you know, this is how I feel. It was a barrage of accusations, totally bad-mannered. Ron is a contractor for the city. Is he not under the same conduct of rules of how to present himself as the rest of the city employees? People who read this are not happy with it, and I'm sorry, they will not work with you because of what they read. It seems to me that Ron is no longer an asset, but a liability to this town. This is how I see it. Also, there are snow and ice in front of the old police station, there's a berm, if you park there, you have to climb over the berm. Every other business has cleaned its snow, this has not been cleaned. Thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else that would like to comment?
I was going to keep my mouth shut, but I can't. I had a-
Can you please state your name, please?
Oh, excuse me, I'm Wayne Whitner, I'm a pastor here in town at First Christian Church. The, I came out to the city and made a statement about the snow. I talked to the person that was in charge, and I was enabled to come to the citizen snow removal, you know, meetings. But I sat and talked to him, and I told him an incident that happened, and this was Ron Vance, where in front of my house, it was three feet of snow or ice. And I tried to get up close enough to the curb to get my wife out of the car. She stepped out on, on the ice, and she went down, and one person trying to get somebody off the ice while standing on the ice, it's next to impossible. But what I am trying to get to, within 24 hours later, and it isn't because of me or anything, but there's a way to come and, to the city and talk about a problem, because we talk in three different ways, our mouth, our eyes, and our body. And if we can talk and look at a person while we're talking, they can understand this a lot better. And I thank Rod and his men for taking care of the situation, that my wife can get out of the car safely. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Public Works. All right, any other citizen comments? Hi.
My name is Bernadette Duran.
Can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Bernadette Duran. I'm a citizen of Montevista, I was born and raised here. I would like to comment on Ron Douglas's topics about the youth, the youth programs, that would be great. But one big problem we have in this town that is affecting youth is the drugs, and it's killing off a generation. Drugs are not, they don't discriminate, they're young, they're old. I don't, I'd like to see, or I'd like to know what's being done in the town. I know of dealers that live right down the street from police officers, from sheriff's officers, whatever, deputies, whatever, they can't be blind, they can't be blind. Our town is suffering, the whole community, the whole nation is suffering. I work for behavioral health, it's unreal. The drug problem is unreal, and it really, we, we have got to do something, I don't know what. I've talked to police officers, I have firsthand knowledge of substance abuse in my family, and I'm tired of it, I'm done, I'm tired. I don't know what we need to do, but something needs to be done. We're killing off a generation. I'm very proud of you that are here, I'm very proud of you. I'm scared, I'm scared for my family. Tonight, some children were taken away from their family because of the drug problem, because of, because they're dealing drugs, they're leaving drugs out in the open for their kids to get to. So I don't know what the answer is, but something needs to be done. I'm afraid of getting that phone call.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
I have, I'm working currently with other groups of these, Rio Grande Prevention Partners. Oh, thank you, Rio Grande Prevention Partners. And it's just simply based on this presentation tonight, we've been working for a long time, but it's, this is something that I agree, has to be dealt with, has to be, we can't chase it away and make it go away, but we can work at it, and I just want the public to know that we do hear, we do know, we do understand, and I personally have been working ever since I got here on this issue, and I've made a decision in the last several weeks to redouble that effort, and just so that the community, the council, and the public here knows that this isn't falling on deaf ears. Something that we need to do, and we will do, and a lot of it is going to involve, involve working with the, the youth in the community, because we've seen the best results when they get involved in the area of drug prevention. So I just wanted to add that.
All right, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Is there any more citizen comments? All right, we're going to move on. Looks like we have ordinances, Ordinance 894, amending Chapter 4, Article 1, final
So Council, before you tonight is just the second reading and final reading of Ordinance 894, amending the business license portion of our code. At the last meeting, you chose not to change anything or edit anything within that document.
All right, so then this is for approving the final reading, this is correct, so we would need a motion to approve that.
I move to approve on final reading, ordinance, the changes to Ordinance 894, amending Chapter 4, Article 1.
I second that. Oop. Go ahead.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Motion carries?
All right, looks like we're down to receive an approval of financial reports.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So as promised at last council meeting, I'm here to present the preliminary December financials. As I stated in the last meeting, this is just kind of a rough draft until we get through the audit, but it gives us a pretty good idea of how we finished out the year. And as stated at last meeting, I don't foresee auditors having too many major changes to these numbers, like, but like I said, I'm not going to set them in stone until Mr. Logan comes and, and does the audit. So just jump right in with the revenues, where they finished at, at the end of 2018, they were at 108 percent, but it's actually a little bit higher, because when I did these again, I didn't have every single little piece of detail, I was only able to make educated guesses at where our revenues would be. So yesterday, I received our last sales tax report from the county, and it was actually $14,000 more than what I estimated. So our fund balance is actually 14,000, almost 15,000 higher than what you see on the paper. So anyways, revenues for the end of the year were at $3,162,494, and the largest source obviously being from tax revenue, whether it's property or sales. The expenditures for the year, we finished at 90 percent of what we thought we would spend, so we came in 10 percent under budget on expenditures and a little over 8 percent higher on revenues. So we had a pretty good swing there, almost a 20 percent swing, so that led to us being able to come in with the general fund of having a pretty healthy fund balance at the end of the year. As of December 31st, cash in the general fund was at $546,559, and the general fund revenues exceeded expenditures for the year by $349,849. And the general fund revenues exceeded expenditures for the year by $349,846. So with the 14,000 though, or the 15,000, that obviously is a little bit higher, and that's going to bring our fund balance in the general fund up to $919,873. When we did the budget, being conservative, we kind of thought maybe $550,000 is where our fund balance was going to be, but we were able to kind of tighten the reins a little bit on the expenditures, and that, that really helped boost the fund balance. Couple of things on the fund balance that we need to keep in mind, obviously, is the $90,000 that's restricted for Tabor. And then also, last year, we received about $19,500 for lodging advertising. And what that is, is to boost tourism for Montavista outside of the valley. We have to use that $19,500 in a way that would attract people to come to the valley, outside of the valley for Montavista. So we just kind of left that there, put it as restricted until we can kind of get a game plan of what we want to do with that money. Again, the general fund balance increase was largely due to the part of the city manager and department heads tightening the reins and keeping, keeping their equipment going with what we have, maintaining everything, doing more with less, basically. You know, they, I can't take all the credit for it because I was only here half a year, but who was here last year? They all did a really good job of getting us where we need to be. The fund balance is up quite a bit. I think it was about 63% that it was up from the end of last year. So to do that in one year is, is pretty impressive. You don't see that very often in a general fund, governmental fund like that. You don't see a big jump. So kudos to everybody last year. For the end of the year, in your packets, you'll see a couple of graphs that I tried to do for each fund. And what that does is it, it looks at the, of what we got as a whole for revenue and what we spent as a whole, and divides it up into each department so you can kind of see a picture representation that will, I don't know, kind of help, I guess. Sometimes it's better for pictures than it is numbers, a little less boring. Moving on to the water fund, total revenues in the water fund for the end of the year were at 120% of what we budgeted. So we came in with $1,074,976, with the majority of that being for services. Expenditures were at 83%. So the water fund really did a good job. So good job, Rob. The total expenditures for the water fund were $936,000. So revenues exceeded expenditures in the water fund by $138,975, which brought the fund balance in the water fund up to 1.8 million. So pretty good there. That was about an 8% increase in the fund balance. As of December 31st, the cash balance for the water fund was $1,119,774. So we have good, good cash balances there as well. Moving on to the sewer fund, again, not much to say. I've kind of said it along, the budget was a little bit off for that one. Our revenues in the sewer fund came in at 81% of the budget, but we're hoping that this year we'll be able to track that a little bit better. Total revenues were $1,228,289. One of the adjusting entries that's still going to need to be made is for the grant revenue in here. So we're, again, I kind of talked about the expenditures that we had for the capital projects that we've submitted the requests for, and we actually just got that money about a week ago. So it's here, we just have to make the adjusting entry for that. So that will kind of even out what the deficit is there, and probably end up with no deficit for the year in the sewer fund. Expand, sorry.
That's grant money that's spoken for, correct?
Right. It's already been spent. It's basically just a reimbursement. But we, in order to get the reimbursement, we had to pay our vendors and our contractors so that the state would release those funds. So we had to put the money out, but we got the money back. Okay. So expenditures in the sewer fund total were at 87% of the approved budget, or 1.5 million roughly. And again, a majority of that came from the finalization of the capital projects or the stages that we had going on there. The unrestricted cash balance for the sewer fund is $230,358, but again, you'll see that go up because of what we received in. The fund balance for the sewer fund at the end of 2018 was 3.5 million roughly. So, you know, it's down a little bit from December 31st of 2017, but again, that goes back to what we had to do at the end of the year. That wouldn't have happened if it would have happened in June or July. You wouldn't have seen that. So the revenues and expenditures in the sewer fund came in below budget, but were relative to each other in amount. Again, like I said, I don't foresee it being, our expenditures exceeding our revenues once we get all the adjusting entries done. And then just kind of as a side note, Kyle with Logan and Associates will be here the first week in March to work on the audit. And so I'm hoping that maybe by mid-April, we'll be done with the audit for the year. That's all I have.
Well, not bad news.
Nope. Good news.
Jenny, thank you for participating at the school and the program you did for the kids.
Oh, yeah.
That was awesome.
It was fun.
Did you enjoy it?
I did. I loved it. I like doing that stuff. I, I too, I feel like our youth are our future, and if we're not willing to invest in them, then we're not investing in the right way. So, and, you know, you can throw money at anything, but time is what's going to make the impact. So.
Thank you, Jenny.
Very true.
Staff proposals, reports, and actions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I love this thing. Well, the good thing is we've already taken care of some of the things on my report. I did talk about Formation Ag, which I think most of you are familiar with, but they made a presentation at the U R G E D breakfast meeting and basically talked about everything they're doing, and it was a much broader scope of the equipment they're building than I thought. So they're in the old Shaw Ironworks building. They're ramping up right now. They have international orders for their equipment. And their equipment does more than, you know, when I actually saw the videos of it, there's a whole line of equipment that's related to hemp harvesting and some other, you know, they have other equipment as well. But it's really kind of impressive, you know, they just set aside the city limits for them to move. Everyone knows where Power Zone is up, 285, but for them to create a whole nother plant in the, in the city. And that probably will have, you know, I think they were saying five to 10 employees, and that might, might grow, you know, quite a bit as they do what they, they're doing. And their harvesting, the main harvesting machine is patented. So there's not many companies in the world that actually make the equipment. So that's really pretty exciting. I think that's really neat. And, you know, when I was at that opportunity zone training, there were a couple of entrepreneurs in there, not folks that I knew, that were working on hemp-associated business plans, things that they wanted to develop. So, you know, I think that's a pretty interesting industry for our community and for the valley because it saves water, too. Today, actually, Jenny and I met with two representatives from USDA Rural Development, and we have our, sorry, budget workshop next Tuesday. We'll actually roll out what a financing piece would look like. And I probably actually send that tomorrow so you can look at it and go, hmm. It's actually very favorable. Now, of course, you're using today's dollars, today's rates, that kind of stuff. And, you know, their, their program expands and contracts depending on federal funding, and they're in continuing resolution, so they don't have more money this year than they did. But we're really talking about, and I'll just throw this out here, is if we have to do this project, it probably is not before 2028. So as we're structuring our, our rate studies this summer, you know, part of it will be planning towards that project. You know, Rob, you talked about there's some other regs that are now getting pushed that, you know, are going to inform that as well. But the USDA, the two ladies from there were like really impressed that we were actually thinking that far ahead, which is good. And their process really takes a year, year and a half. Now, something that's really good as well is that our contract engineers are well-known to the USDA staff. So they're like, oh, you're working with those guys? Oh, yeah, that's great. So one of the advantages of the contract engineers we have, Element Engineering, is that they know about USDA programs, they're also well-connected with the state regulatory agencies and stuff. So, you know, we had a kickoff meeting with them this week, and that was really interesting for me to sit in on and talk about where we're going with projects for this year. And I think, you know, it's really Rob's thing to talk about, but it was certainly interesting. The status of the Wage Classification Study, we will have it for you in your hands at the work session. It's pretty much ironed out. We're to short a conference call on Monday to finalize a few things. We've talked about it with the management team a little bit, and we'll have the study for you itself, along with a proposal of how to approach getting our employees onto the scale. You know, in the, the report, just a couple of things about it, you know, there's a 100% market number, and we're not using that because it's honestly not attainable for the city wage-wise. But I will say that the 80% market rate on that makes us competitive with Alamosa, very competitive with them. And obviously, that's important to us, and it makes us more competitive than almost anyone in the valley. So that's good news, and I think we're getting to the level there, and you'll see how it rolls out, that, you know, we get, we'll be competitive, you know, we're not going to be competitive with Denver, except for on the cost of living side. So, you know, we're not ever going to pay as much as they do. We couldn't afford it. But for somebody that's looking for our environment, we will be competitive. So we're pretty excited about that. We have a lot of hours in that. We also kind of started to roll out of our new payroll vendor this week, and we had two trainings for the employees. It looks like it's going to work really nicely. The transition between two payroll systems is always fun, you know, for the employees, and I mean facetiously, but I think, you know, Jenny and Bob did a really good job working many hours on that, and it's going to be a lot smoother than our last transition. And the great thing is our vendor is very responsive. ADP is a huge corporation. You call them, three days later, they're like, oh, you have this problem you need fixed three days ago? I mean, realistically, these new folks, we had a little glitch this week, and they fixed it in an hour and a half. Couple of phone calls, Jenny called them, here's what it is, they got it figured out. So I think that'll be pretty exciting as well. And that is all I have this evening, unless you have any questions for me.
Not a one?
I don't.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep my report fairly short and sweet, too. The awful lot of stuff comes through, probably your emails as well as mine from Forrest, and he keeps us pretty well informed of all the things that's going on in this town. There's a lot of things going on, and so it's always good to, to get that stuff and be informed as to what's going on. So I try and run through those every week. Some of you, probably all of you, were here for the golf course meeting last week. We're going to start working on that with the golf course folks and try and redo the lease, I think is a good start. We're going to pick up the lease, I think, from Alamosa and try and figure out if what we're doing is, is good, bad, or indifferent. But I think the idea would be to try and rework that lease over and try and figure out something that might work for the city and the golf course. In my view, it's a pretty valuable asset, worth a lot of money if you go have to develop a golf course. So it's probably worth our effort to try and get something done on that. And we're going to, I think, having a meeting on Monday, if I recall, to start the, start the process. So, so that'll keep us busy for a little bit. Doing a little bit of work on some properties that are either burned down or, or just trying to still keep getting stuff done. And it's a slow process, trying to run people down, try and figure out where they are, why they haven't done anything with their properties. It's amazing how people can get lost in a little town like Montavista, but it's tough running people down at times, but we're still working on that. I wish Ms. Duran had stayed a little bit. I think she left. But, you know, certainly, I've been a judge for over 32 years, and I've watched the drug problem get worse and worse and worse over time. And what can we do? I don't know. We, you know, some things that just, this little small town has done. I mean, when I first took the job here, one of the first things we didn't have in our code was a way to enforce underage marijuana possession by young offenders. And the chief said, hey, can you put something together? So we did that. We got the code changed. And so we're starting to see quite a few young offenders coming in under that charge, and I'm sure as the, the weather warms up, we'll see more and more. But, you know, it's a real joint effort from a lot of folks. I mean, we've got to pass laws, we've got to have the police enforce them, we've got to have the courts follow through. So it really is a team effort, but just the small thing of getting the code amended allows our police officers to go out and write a ticket to a young offender. That young offender comes into court, and what we're doing, just so the council has some knowledge about what we're doing in court, if you get a young offender, first time offense, we'll run him through a justice program in Alamosa, and it's a, it's a counseling and an educational type program that they go through. And if they get a certificate that says they've completed the program, then we ask the judge to dismiss the case. So that offender doesn't have a record, gets some education, and hopefully learns that let's not do it again. So, you know, that may seem like a bit of a small thing in a small town, but, you know, I think one of the main things is education of our young folks. I mean, you can't put everybody in jail, we just don't have enough room. But you got to get some education to them as soon as you can. And so that's one little effort that this team of the chief and Forrest and myself and the judge and Nita and everybody kind of working together, you run people through a program, and hopefully you get some education, and they decide that maybe that's not a good way to go. So, you know, that, I think it's a very good program. It seems to run very nice, and hopefully, we don't have too many repeat offenders. We'll see how it works. But, you know, I think I've been a little busy in the courts the last couple of months, and, you know, there's, we're getting more and more people through, and the court's running pretty smooth. And the judge and Nita seem to keep things in place pretty well. So, in fact, the judge was not even there last, last week because she had a death in her family. So, so Nita and I took on the program, and rather than continue an inconvenience, maybe 25 people, we said, let's see what we can get done. So we got almost everybody lined up with some kind of plea, and, and things are running pretty smooth. So, but anyway, things have actually been fairly quiet the last couple of weeks, which I think is, is, is good. But I do, I do think that this issue of drugs is everybody's problem. Everybody's probably affected by somebody in their family or somebody they know, and it's a constant battle from the police department all the way through the court system. But I think that our program here is going to help a lot of young folks and young offenders, and we'll see how, how it works over some time. Any questions from anybody?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Margot might have a question.
Just another question. Has any man resolved the cars, the railway cars on the tracks? You know, the whole, you know, the owner of those railway cars? You know, that deal? Is that still a process?
We're still working on that. That's a little bit of a constant problem for us.
Okay.
And, yes, we're working on it. It's a slow process.
Thank you.
We're still trying to be, so you all, if you can, you can make the progress.
Thank you.
So I'm not really on your agenda this evening. So, I'm not really on your agenda this evening, but I just have a quick reminder. Just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow between ten and noon, Mayor Dale Becker and myself will be downtown on two eighty-five, or excuse me, not two eighty-five, one sixty in Adams doing the mayor walkabout. So, businesses, please be open between ten and noon. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you, Nita. Alright, Police Department.
Good evening. Kind of echo what Mike had to say a little bit about the, the drug problem. It is formidable, no doubt. But I think the amount of resources, time and energy that is being put towards it is also very impressive. From everything from city government clear up to, you know, the United States government and what that looks like for a wall, what that looks like for ICE, what that looks like all the way down to a municipal ordinance for marijuana. You know, and again, you know, kudos to you for taking a stand on marijuana. It's really easy to opt in. I think that fund balance would look better, no doubt, but I'm not sure it's worth it. I don't, I don't know what these guys think about marijuana, but I know nationwide, everywhere that it's been legalized has skyrocketed in, in use. And I think that's a problem. Is it a gateway drug? You can argue all you want. Everything's a gateway when it comes to something that makes you feel good or euphoric or something that, you know, there's nothing, you know, we could get into a lot of discussions about what we're doing about the, the drug problem, but I think if you just kind of hear me through my report, about half of it is related directly to it. Starting with Coffee with a Cop. Coffee with a Cop is about getting back in touch with the community. I do it twice this next coming month, going to be March second at the Starbucks in Alamosa, Valleywide. I mean, we're hoping literally every agency in the valley will be there represented by some member of their department. That'd be twenty-two if, if my calculations are right. So, that'd be pretty cool. So, March second, Alamosa, Valleywide, Starbucks, ten to noon. Be pretty impressive. Every Saturday, or every second Saturday at Mountain View, I do my own Coffee with a Cop and Sheriff of Rio Grande, McDonald, is basically said he'll be there every chance he gets. So, we're going to have both of the, the larger departments represented there second Saturday of every month. And again, it's about outreach and this, I think we had three people, citizens last time and like seven cops and, and representatives of the legal system. So, that was pretty cool. We had pretty good discussions kind of along what Mike was saying about the frustrations about bonds and, and how things fall through the cracks and is there enough being done for certain crimes and not enough being done for others. So, there's a lot of reform that's taking place because the war on drugs was completely misunderstood, attacked from completely the wrong angle, and that's changing. A lot of that's changing. So, there is a lot being done. Neighborhood Watch, same thing. It's, it's what it's about. You know, Project Three Sixty-Five was about asking others to do what the police department has done. We were going to be the model, we're going to, we were going to put our money where our mouth is and now we're asking everybody else. Get to know your neighbor, step up, come to meetings, counselors, get into your districts. That's what we're asking. So, again, it's, it's about that. And if you know something, say something. If you see something, say something. It's really easy to kind of sit back and say, I don't want to get involved, it's not my problem. Well, you just heard it. It's obviously her problem. Something's affecting her. And, and something happened today and I know exactly what it is, I can't speak of it, that's terrible. You know, it's, it's a culmination that's ruining a family and not just a single family unit, but everybody that's affected. That culture of drugs is devastating. Whether it's in the first year or the tenth year, it's going to take you down. There's no question. Just like alcohol, just like, you know, all the other drugs that are out there. It's pretty powerful. Crime Stoppers, same thing. How can we make the system available for those that don't want to use the traditional system? The vice president's here, there's a lot being done. On March twenty-third at the Alamosa Rec Center Skate Rink, there's a fundraiser and we're going to try to raise money for the cause of Crime Stoppers. Your entry into the skate night will not be, but as you go into the, the event, there are going to be an auction for a Weatherby rifle. There's going to be a silent auction, or a raffle I should say, silent auction for some donated items that different businesses have, have stepped up for. And I don't know all of those right now, but it'll be pretty exciting. And then there'll be some basic concessions being sold. All of that will go towards Crime Stoppers. So, it could be pretty significant. But all that again is outreach and it, it's about crime. It's about getting to know your neighbors and it's about trying to find solutions for all of this. Under the next category of statistics, the very first one is lead. All of my officers are trained. We made our first three referrals. We have three people in the program right now that are Montevista residents. Actually, we have more than that because Alamosa's made some referrals that ended up being Montevista residents. So, these are people who've been taken under the fold of a system that's wanting to decriminalize the fact that you're an addict and trying to get you help as opposed to putting you in jail. What better program can there possibly be other than there's not unlimited funds for this? So, it's a little bit tricky. And what it gave is officers that option. We didn't have an option before. What was our option? Walk away or put you in jail. That's all we had. Now, we have a third option, which is lead. Law enforcement assisted diversion. And within, well, actually, we don't even technically start until the first of April and we already have three people in the program. So, my guys are excited about it. I'm excited about it. The community's ripe for it and it's going to be a really good project. Traffic Circle is the very next on that line. Alamosa has a CRP or Community, drew a blank, Center for Restorative Programs, there we go, has an amazing program and that's what Mike was talking about for diversion. They also do it for traffic offenses because we all know how easy it is at sixteen to lose your license just over one little loop. Traffic Circle is the same kind of concept. They don't have a lot of resources for the Traffic Circle. They only have six slots per month. Not a lot of, not a lot of young folks there. So, we're going to try to mirror that project under the CRP model and try to have it right here in, in Montevista so that people don't have to travel. And it'll be countywide. So, if it's a county charge, we would still have the option here whether it's a muni charge. We'll see how that goes. But again, we're taking on more. Why? Because we think it's important. Crime Activity Update, I'm not going to go through it, but it's in your packet. I think you see the, the changes. From when, I think, a year ago, there would be every other line would be a, a property crime. There are still burglaries on there. We're up to four for the year. That's way below pace from a year and a half ago. But it's been cold, the nature helps with some of that, but we'll take it where we can get it. And I think that, again, that that's all good. So, if you have any questions about the activity on there, let me know, but I think it's pretty straightforward and pretty positive. There's everything from typical warrant arrests to narcotics arrests to domestic violence is pretty consistent with the community that we should be as a community that we had been. So, we're moving in the right direction. Administration, phew. So, a month ago, I talked to you and I was like, this person left, we're short here. We've completely flipped that upside down. We have a lot to work to do. We, we now officially, as of Monday, I think, HR Director made our second conditional officer. We're full staffed for police officers and code enforcement's on as well and I'll talk about him in a minute. What that means, I don't know. That's still probably four to six months of training and, you know, getting everybody up to speed. But the point is, they're there. They're here and we're, we're going to be working forward from there. Remodel. Remodel's pretty exciting too. So, SLVREC had a contractor out here looking at the remodel for the locker room. I don't know how it's going to go. Hopefully it comes in within their budget, but the police department would have a locker room where, where officers could come, get dressed out. If something were to happen, they'd have showers during their shifts or after. So, it would kind of coincide with the, the gym, the locker room. Generally speaking, the staff room, kind of my area, the administration area, we've done a lot of painting, getting that up to speed, painted the, the conference room. And then the, the patrol area is almost done as well. They have cubicles now where they can work in. We have a training board, we have a training TV, we have training tables. It's, it's pretty nice. So, hopefully in the next couple of months, invite you guys to have a, a show and tell and a walkthrough or open house or whatever we want to call it. But we've made a lot, a lot of changes in these sixteen months and I think everybody's happy with it. One of my K-9 officers was standing over there. I was going to embarrass him because there's another significant effort. He's taken over two hundred grams of narcotics since April first, I'm just going to say, of last year with him and his dog. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of work going on, not only just from the traditional law enforcement, from all these restorative, you know, human contact, trying to, trying to get to the root of the problem. Lot, lot going on. Rio Grande, same thing. The new sheriff, pretty impressed with him. He, he take the bull by the horns. Our relationship's completely changing from where it was. He's up to staff as well. He has an investigator now that's working with my investigator. So, that these very short distances between our jurisdiction and theirs, hopefully now that, that's not, you know, the Grand Canyon where we don't know what's going on with each other's departments and what happened just across the road. The big home invasion that happened and out in the Sherman area, those, those guys were suspects in two of our burglaries. So, whether we could prove it or not, we knew it. And guess what? They decided to do it again and were caught. So, they're in jail because of that. And we may not be able to clear our burglaries, but they're not available to do another one. We'll see if we can't prove it or if, or if they want to admit to it. But Sheriff McDonald's also doing some of the things that Mike talked about, trying to get us on the same page, understanding that cops make mistakes, DAs see things wrong, judges make mistakes. And we're trying to figure out how we can all get on the same page so that when we have a certain problem, we can deal with it in the best way possible. So, we actually have, I think, an unprecedented meeting with law enforcement, district attorney's office, and the judges coming up in about three weeks. So, that's our own little small piece of ply, piece of the pie criminal justice reform that's happening all across the state and all across the country. You guys hear about it all the time. So, that's pretty, pretty exciting too. Last thing is code enforcement. You know, code enforcement's a, a thankless job between the animals and, you know, just today I went out and thought I was being awful nice. This is huge tractor trailer parked at Fourth and Davis. And it's like, sir, you know this, boy, we got called some names. They're just, it's just phenomenal how you get treated when there's a semi. Well, I've been doing it for years and my neighbor did it for ten years before that. That's part of our problem. You know, we, we need to draw a line in the sand. Rob said it at the snow meeting. It's going to be a monumental task. You talk about the complaints that are coming, going to come your way from getting a parking ticket for parking where I have parked for the last forty years. Well, it's coming. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of education, proper signage. We're not going to ambush people, but when, when push comes to shove, no, your tractor trailer has no business being on Davis, period. But, that's how it goes. So, Patrick Montoya, you'll get to know him. We're going to swear everybody in, I believe, next council meeting. And hopefully we'll be able to do all three, the two officers and the new code. He's, he's pretty, he's ready to go. He's got some experience, he's a little more mature. So, I'm looking forward to, to Patrick and, and seeing where he takes things. But his biggest task has been from Forrest and I is for education. For, for the better part of the first part of this year, would like to be about what we can, hopefully can educate people and then they can make the choice of whether they want to comply or we have to put a parking ticket because we just sent those off too. We have two thousand parking tickets coming and I really don't want to use them, but they're, they're coming. And they're going to be about twenty-five bucks for parking illegally, a hundred bucks for your tractor trailer being in the area and seventy-five, I think, for handicaps. So, those are the, the fine structures. I might have set that back for a second. Was that right? So, that's coming as well. But it's, it is really about education. I know we've already done an article once about some of this stuff and I know Forrest and Rob have much more to come and we're going to be talking about signage. So, kind of keep that in mind as well. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Something we haven't spoken about in a while, school, community officer, I don't know what the official name was.
SRO, School Resource Officer.
Is that in the, in the works since staffing is getting?
Without getting myself in trouble with my boss, yes. So, I have every intention and he's on board with it, but it's kind of a unique relationship. Nationally, SROs typically work for the school. They're under the purview of the department. They have all the, the responsibilities, rest powers that the department have, but they actually get paid by the school. That's difficult for us. We're so small. If I had to give up an officer contractually, it could be painful depending on what happens as quickly as our staffing can fluctuate. So, our goal is to carve it out of our budget and, and be able to apply it as needed, which is a minimum of half-time basis starting in the nineteen-twenty school year. So, if everything goes right, when school starts after the summer, we'll have an officer in there at least. And when I say in there, all five schools, including the middle school, unless the sheriff does something that would cover that, at least twenty hours a week. That would be the goal. And more hopefully. And the K-9s are already doing SNFs. So, wouldn't we add it up everybody's time? Hopefully it would be closer to a full-time officer. I don't know that we'll ever be able to do, you know, a full-time officer per se, but definitely increasing the reach and the, the availability and for whatever the school needs. Our, our goal is not to be in there to enforce crime, but more to mentor, you know, youth. But we'll work with schools on how they want. You know, we, we definitely can force crime issues as well. Does that, can I answer your question?
Yes, I was just wondering if that was still alive because I know it's a great idea. I mean, they're not there to police the kids, but to protect. And I, I like the idea, but I know it's, good heavens with all the schools and the budget personnel. I understand the issues. I just want to know if it was still alive. Sounds like.
It is. School District's been really great too. We have breakfasts every other month at Forrest? I don't know. I always forget.
It's supposed to be monthly by the time.
It fluctuates.
Yeah, they, they've been really great. They, they, they don't really have a budget for it, so it's kind of good for us, but they're working on grants that might be able to help out however that looks. They've already promised some money to the K-9 program because we're donating time. We're not charging for that service. But they're, they're very, they seem very open for making that a, a good relationship as opposed to just a, you know, a take-take.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Thank you.
It's embarrassing.
Good evening, Counsel. You have my report in your packet and I just kind of, kind of touch on a few things. Just going to go through the different divisions within Public Works. Parks, still doing the maintenance, taking care, painting picnic tables and getting things ready for summer. As we roll into March, we will be gearing up for summer. So, right now, the emphasis is kind of switching from the picnic tables and that type stuff more to the equipment, getting them ready for summer. So, we'll start advertising for our summer help come April. So, we'll add, actually, at the end of Mar-, excuse me, end of March, we'll actually have the ad going out to the paper. Last month, I kind of talked really heavily on the streets. Still dealing with some of the snow, mainly ICE issues right now. And the new thing that's always comes is our friend, the pothole. So, we are getting more and more of those. So, we're going to be starting to tackle those. The guys, I don't know if it was on the paper, but also they hung all the banners up for the Crane Festival. Like to give a shout out to the Crane Festival and specifically Deb Calhan. They wanted to purchase some banners for the event to hang up on our streetlights. We gave them some criteria that we'd like to see and I really think they knocked it completely out of the park. I think they looked fantastic and I also think they're going to really weather well, really well, you know. So, very, very happy with what they did. I think they did a fantastic job. So, last month, I've kind of highlighted the work of the Streets Department. This month, I'd really like to highlight the work that goes on that most people don't see, but that's in our utilities. We did have a water leak this past month. It was advertised really well. The crew went out there and they actually knocked it out far faster than I even thought. I had scheduled the water off to go off at nine. They had traffic control, the hole dug, the pipe exposed by eight-thirty. So, they wound up waiting thirty minutes on me before they could actually turn the water off and do the repair. Had the water completely fixed, water back on by eleven o'clock. So, they did a fantastic job. So, I, I mean, we, we advertised a nine to five shut-off and it was down just a little over a couple hours. So, really knocked it out. And like I said, it was kind of one of those ones. They went in, they did the work, they got it done. And I would say ninety-eight percent of our population never even knew anything happened. So, kudos to my utility guys. And of course, think about it, water leak. And of course, think about it, water leak, I think that day, the high was eighteen, eighteen degrees. When they started to work, it was negative seven. So, big kudos to them. Also wanna send out a huge thank you to the chief. We had a meeting today. We have a potential issue in our fleet department with some stuff that might go on, but the chief came and we sat down and we talked, and I think we got ourselves a really good plan that'll benefit his department, my department, and keep things moving in our fleet. So, so, so really good things. And then finally, um, on my corner, Forrest kinda talked about some of the things that I had been doing. We did have our kickoff meeting with Element, and I was really appreciated you sitting in on that, Forrest. Um, we went through all of the different projects that we had planned this year. I went ahead and sent them some preliminary stuff that they needed. Um, so this was just kinda kick, kickoff our session with our new engineers. We, we talked, our street project as far as paving, we went through our water projects and, and doing some of the leak stuff. Also continuation on with our sewer project, much smaller degree than what the last five years have been. But going through it all, stormwater, all of that. So it was a good meeting. Another thing that you may not know, but Element received Associate of the Year, that's our engineering firm, from the Colorado Rule Water. So, a very good engineering firm, so very glad to have them on board. So, um, segue into the, I did attend the Colorado Rule Water Conference this, this month in Denver. It was a good conference. I took two of our operators with me. It was a good experience for both of them. One of the big topics in the first huge topic for the week was the new regulatory updates. So you guys have heard me give you the, the doomsday scenario of Reg eighty-five. That's been kinda pushed back to twenty-twenty-seven for implementation, and they're working now on what's called Regulation Thirty-One, which is stream quality. And it's basically the removal, elimination of nutrients from our streams. That one has a much greater potential for us to look at some money, but we do have some breathing room, so I just wanna make sure council's completely aware that I wanna continue to work on our I and I and trying to get our flows to our wastewater plants below a million gallons a day. I think that's critical as we go forward. Budget session that Forrest mentioned, and we'll talk some more about that. So it was a good conference. Big changes coming up, at least for us, that are certified operators. Um, OCPO has been the certifying agency for the last twenty years. Um, they are no longer doing the contract. That contract was awarded to Rule Water. Um, so all of the stuff we have been doing is going to change as of March first. Everything's, as they're doing with the state, everything's running through a portal. So all of us operators are gonna have to start using a portal, and it's got some benefits. We'll be able to do online testing, um, which will save us some time. In the past, there's only been three testing cycles a year. Now, once you get approved for a test, as long as there's a proctor available somewhere, you can go into state and take a test. Proctor ship actually goes down to New Mexico, so it opened up an area for us, gives us a little more opportunity to test and maintain our licenses. So, um, I also included in your packet, the last item I'll talk about is our C dot transportation planning region meeting. I attended that this month. These are really important meetings. Um, in your packet, I included the minutes and everything from that meeting and a list of projects that go on. Basically, with those meetings, we as representatives determine what projects happen within our region. We're a part of Region Five. Um, there's a thing called the STIP. If it doesn't happen and get onto the STIP, it does not happen within the state of Colorado. The STIP right now has been planned out through twenty-twenty-four. Um, we're just starting to kickoff to plan from now through twenty-thirty. So this is the time period that if you guys have some ideas for projects that need to happen on our U.S. highways, whether that's one sixty, two eighty-five, or fifteen, as they all impact Manavista, this is the time to let me know or go, as council members, you're more than welcome to go to those meetings and start expressing what we need in our valley. I'm gonna be pushing for the continuation of one sixty east. Um, they came in and they redid the, from Jefferson west of our town. And I'm gonna kinda push them to rehab from Jefferson east through our city limits and try to get that and tie that into the, um, the passing lane, six miles east of us. So they wanna continue that. So gonna really try to push that. If you guys have other ideas. Fifteen is a prime one for some shouldering. It needs some shoulders as you get a little further south of town. Um, so there's a lot of things that need to be done. So, but this is the form in which you guys do that, okay? And with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have. All right? Thank you very much. Most of them are south of the city. Yeah, most of them are south. Yeah, as we get into the city limits, the shoulders widen quite, quite a little bit. Um, it's mainly once you do where the ditch crosses from there is where most of the rollovers happen. Yeah, so, all right? Thank you.
Well, good evening, council. Hope you're all doing well tonight. Guess I'll start off with not realizing I actually had to report tonight and then finding out that the report you guys have in your packet is last month's. Yeah, so I'll try to be brief and touch on some of the things I can try to remember. The past two months have been run, 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 like, it's been busy. But, uh, we're working on pushing out new computers. We've got surfaces like Unitah and Jenny both have new Surface Pros. They're amazing computers. Love them. And then, well, as you guys have been made very well aware of your new Chromebooks in front of you, as much as I don't like them. The problem we're running into is our server racks in the back are full, so we're now working with Public Works to try to expand that because we physically cannot expand anymore. That one will hopefully be going well, and we'll probably have a, a more in-depth report on that one here in the future, probably next month, as I believe the project's gonna be going into effect here within the next month. But I can't really tell. Other than that, though, it's just been a lot of little things. We've had to fix a few phones here and there. We've had new people come in, so create new accounts, get things set up for them with, uh, you know, Public Works or the police department, et cetera, et cetera. Other than that, it's just been some of the larger projects that I've mentioned and then running around updating things, fixing things, et cetera, et cetera. Other than that, I don't really have much else. So if you guys have any questions, comments, or concerns, that's the time.
If I could just add something, um, just a shout out to IT. So they're here in force when we did the training with a new payroll system, and it's a phone-based app. And for some of our employees, that's more challenging than others. But, uh, they were here and they helped, uh, employees get that thing working. And, you know, once it works, it's actually a really nice little app. But they spent a lot of time here that day doing other work, but also when we had those trainings, uh, really helping the employees out. So we really appreciated their time on that.
Oh, yeah. Once it's running, it's really simple. You click on it and you can click clock in or clock out. You can view your hours that you've built up, things like that, but it's the setting up process when, you know, communication between us and the company isn't exactly that good. And we go to set up and everything's incorrect, so then we had to wait a couple hours. But once everything was up and going, it was, it works pretty good.
So is this an app, you said?
Phone app, just like you go to the Google Play Store and you download that vendor's app, you know. And, and the initial rollout of it in the morning, there was a coding error. And, but as I was talking about with our new, um, folks, you know, quick little phone call, and they corrected the coding error, and so by the afternoon, it worked for everybody.
And this is a method to clock in and out?
Right. So, you know, we had that with ADP as well, um, but it gives the oppor, you know, opportunity for the employees and will, um, you know, so they're, they get to the job site, they get to work, and they can, and it has geofences, so you can't clock in from Tijuana or Hawaii, unfortunately. But, um, wherever you're going, but it's geofenced to come in, they pop it up, they can punch in, and then they're good to go. And if they go on, you know, to lunch, they just punch out. They punch back in when you get back.
That kinda saves time and come in and clock out here.
Right, right. And, you know, um, we will actually, in Public Works, um, have a, the time clock reader as well as for extra convenience, and that should work if everything works like we think it will. That, you know, all the city employees have an electronic ID card, and so they, you can wave the card right in front of it, and it, you're clocked in. So it, it's convenience for the employees. It doesn't add much cost to the system. But it does make it easier. And then for employees that have different work codes, like they're doing one job, and, and I'll use police officers, so, you know, there's other job codes they could have, like Click It or Ticket or DUI Enforcement. So they can, with this system, click out of their regular shift, click into the DUI or the Click It or Ticket or whatever extra duty they have, um, really simply and really quickly. So it, it helps with the payroll accounting side, um, and they're very accurate systems. You know, once the, like I said, the transition, there'll be a few bugs. But I think that this system's kinda more robust for us than having a smaller vendor. You know, Jenny's able to call them and stuff happens. So.
Awesome.
It's pretty exciting.
Cool. That's great.
All right. Well, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, council committee, city commissions, and councillor reports. Anybody?
Let's see, there was Neighborhood Watch was, um, Monday night, and Gary was there to start talking with the different residents about the rollout for Neighborhood Watch three sixty-five, and we had some really nice conversations and great ideas. Attended the library board meeting last night, and, uh, yeah, it's busy, but I think things are going well. Guess that's what I wanted to.
Awesome.
We all got to meet our new commissioners at, uh, the Commissioners Lunch, and that was very interesting. Um, I think we have some good folks on board, and if you can go to a county commissioners meeting, I would encourage everyone to go and get involved on that level as well. They, what, what they do inevitably trickles down to what we do in some way or another. So it's a good, another good place to get involved if, if you're interested. We didn't have our, our council school meeting. Um, that one got postponed. Uh, U R A meetings are the same night as my cemetery meeting, so I haven't been to a U R A meeting for quite some time. And that's kind of it for me.
And I really don't have anything tonight.
First Tuesday, and I used to be able to do both, and then we switched our meeting times to be the same time. So, uh, since I run the cemetery, I kinda have to be at that one.
So it's the first Tuesday at seven P M, so a little bit later start the most for meetings.
Where is this located?
Uh, right here.
Here. Well, I think in the summertime, we will meet, uh, at five, which might make it easier for me to get to the U R A meetings. But certainly join if you want to. It's an interesting, uh, dynamic that goes on in the city that, uh, not everyone's aware of. So, yeah. I'm done.
Just a, a couple of items. The, um, we heard a little bit tonight about the, uh, Sky High renovation project. The thing that excites me is actually seeing something happen. So we've been meeting, we're meeting again, um, the next one, next Tuesday. Um, and, uh, Forrest and, and the mayor and myself have been at, at, uh, well, pretty much most, most of those, not all of them. And actually, just for whatever it's worth, maybe you've heard this before, um, some progress being made. And I'm excited to see some actual visible progress in terms of that, uh, slide. That's a start. And it's something we can all see and appreciate, and this thing needs to be saved and renovated. And, uh, we're on the, a road for that. The golf course meeting, I think we touched on, uh, some, as far as I'm concerned, again, some real progress there in terms of, of actually defining the relationship and the business plan and the progress, and, uh, doing something worthwhile that is, again, gonna be noticeable in our town. And the final thing is, um, uh, I, I can't go into a lot of detail about it, but we did, I was at a meeting this last week where, uh, the, the main speaker didn't show up, but nonetheless, we were all there, and he's gonna be here this, uh, this next month. But talking about, there's, there's, uh, a long chain of events that goes on with this drug problem. It's the, uh, initial usage or prevention is writ, we, we're like, and way at the other end of the scale is rehab. A lot of emphasis has been put on the rehab, and that's what, um, uh, what Mike was actually referring to. City Attorney was saying that, um, uh, there's, uh, you need options, you need alternative sentencing, you need a lot of different elements involved. And rehab has not been one of, cause I, I mentioned RGPP and working with them in terms of prevention. That's what they're called, the Rio Grande Prevention Partners. But we talked about a rehab facility that very well could present itself for availability right here in our community. And without any, without the city or any outside agency bringing it in, it's, uh, it's, well, it's, uh, it's, it's run essentially, I will say this, by the folks that have recovered under this program. And their recovery ratio is way higher than anything that we usually hear about. It's in the seventy percent range or more. It maybe doesn't sound, you know, well, what about the other thirty? Well, typical, uh, rehab facilities are in the forty to fifty percent range at, at best. And the track record on this particular, so then we'll be hearing some more about that. We're gonna meet, uh, next month, and we'll have some more to talk about that, but just wanted to emphasize that.